Mr. Porter.
Mr. Rich.
Present.
Mr. Venable.
Present.
Mr. Gillivers, present.
Mr. Seuss.
Present.
And the chairman is present also.
We'll have verification by Mr. Porter.
Let's pray together. God our Father, we're blessed and every day we look around to see the beauty that you have made for us and enjoy. We're thankful for that. We are thankful that the rains are over for now, but we're just so thankful to see the sunshine around us with God. Most importantly, we're important and glad to see the people around us. So thank you for the people of this county. We pray that you continue to watch over us, guide us and direct us every day. Do the commissioners as they talk about the matters that are important to the people of this county, give them wisdom and discernment and compassion. Watch over us every day in Christ's name.
Amen.
For the witness, through the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Big approval again at the meeting.
I'll make commercial approval again.
Got a motion to second all the votes, say aye and aye on the vote. We had no warrants presentation today. Other comments? Mr. Morgan.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, citizens. Always appreciate your time. I just wanted to make a brief mention here about events that occurred at the last meeting concerning setting the rules aside. I had spoken to Mr. Porter and what I'm about to say, Lord have mercy, I'm not an attorney. Mr. Porter is a wise attorney and does an excellent job for y'all. But setting the rules aside in this particular situation that y'all did last week, there was no mention, and this involved the, this course was a work session last week, and there was a special meeting afterwards concerning voting precincts. But this what struck me as peculiar about it. The reason the state of Alabama has open meetings rules and the law is to designate that when the meetings will be appropriately designated as a meeting, whether it be a work session or a regular meeting where you vote. And of course, the rules were set aside last week to acquire a vote. I have concerns about this because, I mean, you can set the rules aside for your procedures of your meetings here. I question whether you can set the rules aside for a state law, such as the requirements to post on an agenda. I'm not saying you're wrong what you're done because like I said, I'm not the wise attorney as Mr. Porter is, but I am saying as a citizen of Jackson County, reading the open meetings law and have studied this conundrum, sometimes it comes upon public entities, I have a concern about this because of the vision of the agenda. If you're gonna do, and my concern is if you're gonna do something, do it right. And I just happen to think that it would have been very easy to stipulate before the meeting that you had this issue that came up and say it on the agenda. It was not stated on the agenda. The agenda was a work session agenda. There was no meetings that were scheduled. Hey, I could see where changing the public fund 100 might be an emergency issue, but that wasn't even stated because you had to get it to the legislative body then. Couldn't wait. But even that was not stated prior and during the vote. I'm just asking you to use due consideration in doing what is right. Publish, if it's gonna be an agenda item that you're gonna have to vote on during a work session, call it like it is. Not just necessarily setting the rules aside, which are the procedures you consider aside, but you can't set state law aside. And state law designates what agenda items can be dealt with and what can't. And that's my presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Hugh.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Robert Avery and I'm with the 2020 Census. And we are here in Jackson County trying to recruit workers. And I know you gentlemen and ladies know the importance of the census and what it means to this community to make sure we get a proper head count. So I'm gonna pass one of these around to all the Commissioners here, if you will. We're behind in our recruiting in this area, and we need to try to get it up the best we can. And I know you gentlemen come in contact with a lot of the citizens here in Jackson County. And it's gonna be very, very important that we do get an accurate count. I know most of you probably know and hear that there's a possibility we might lose a congressional seat based on population. And I'm here to tell the folks in Washington and every place that that ain't gonna happen because we're gonna get an accurate count and we're gonna make sure we keep our congressional seat, number one. And number two, they're talking about the possibilities of somewhere around, Alabama is a receiver state. They're saying nationwide, the census probably equals to about $2,000 per person. And since we are a receiver state, we get a lot more than $2,000 per person back into our state. And again, that's why we need to get our numbers up. So I'm just here to make you all aware that they're in the process of hiring people for the census. You can work part-time. We're asking, you know, people who got that part-time time, you can work one hour a day or you can work eight hours a day. You have from 12:01 Sunday morning to 11:59 Saturday night to put your time in because mostly people work from home. And people look at me like, that's crazy. Well, you can work from home and you can work anytime during those hours. Right now, we're not knocking on doors right now. We're doing verifying and a lot of other things. We also need a recruiter for this area. I just got this task about a little over a week ago because the person who was supposed to be working this area resigned. And so right now, if anybody you know who's looking to make some decent money, because it also pays 58 cents a mile for travel. So it's a very good opportunity for some people in the community. So if y'all can help us, we would appreciate it if you put it on your wealth page. And like I said, in your day-to-day talkings, if you can get with some people who need that, they go to 2020census.gov/jobs. And that's it. Anybody have any questions?
Yes, are elected officials allowed to report?
Nope.
I did it in 1990 and 2004 and I was just.
I served 24 years on the gas and city council, so I got off to do that now. But no, elected officials cannot do it. But elected officials and the reason I'm here, because I know the importance of it and what it means for the community. And that's one of the reasons why I decided to take this job because I knew I could need a lot of elected officials and they would understand the importance of making sure we get the accurate count because that means dollars for your area. Any other questions? I thank you for the opportunity. And if you know of any groups I need to come back, civic groups I need to come back and talk to, be glad to do that.
Do you have cards?
Can I give you a card, area?
No, sir.
Okay. Because you remember, we went on furlough. I started to say strat. But we don't, we don't have our census cards yet, but this is my personal business card. All the information there is correct, so you can always get it there. And hopefully they'll get us some business cards pretty soon since they're back at work. Again, thank you for giving the opportunity.
All right, next up is Clark Kinzie.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Clark Kinzie from Bryan, Alabama. Commissioner. I'm here concerning County Road 93. I'm sure the county engineer will inform you all whether that road is in a very bad way after all these rains. As I showed you pictures of it yesterday, Danny, it's in a very bad shape. And just gonna say about, you know, what we do about getting it fixed. You know, I know it ain't gonna happen tomorrow, you know, but I run a construction business, me and my dad, both do. And our turkey is right at the bottom of the mountain there. And about 75% of my business involves that pit. And every load I haul up that mountain comes up that road. And I can't go through Tennessee because that cut through road goes in front of Fox's Trading Post to come up the new way by the dam. There's a 10 ton weight on it and they strictly enforce that. And I know that from personal experience because I got caught on it cutting through. So they enforce it. And so it's really, it's about a 45 minute trip out of the way to go all the way around, you know, to come back to come up the mountain. And I just wanted to voice my opinion, you know, I'd like to see it fixed, you know, as soon as possible just so we can travel it, you know.
To be honest with you, we can't give you a timer.
Oh, I know. Yeah, I know.
We're looking, we've got so many right now. And we don't even know what the extent's gonna be yet.
Yeah, you know, it just happened Saturday, you know, so I don't.
Yeah, we are aware. We actually got, we got four slides. We actually got four or three more just like that. So we, I appreciate it. And we are looking at everyone to see if you can ask for as far as how fast.
Oh, I know. I know that. But I just wanted to voice my opinion.
I appreciate it. Can you send it off? Matt, a few words.
He sure knows. I got some, I'll tell you that.
Are you guys on our room talking?
I'm shouting myself.
Yeah, I know where we're at.
I will, we'll, we'll get back initially.
I know it ain't gonna happen tomorrow, you know.
Appreciate you coming down.
A lot of major problems we gotta face.
I mean, we'll have, we'll have permission to get it to help get it going along and get the road fixed. These are, I suppose, being old business, old world, the new business. First one being a motion to appoint member of the Cumberland Mountain Water Authority Board. We didn't, we actually had one, one person apply and it was this person. And then we had two who were to be reappointed. So we only actually had three letters, two from the, two who want to be reappointed, one for the vacant spot. So first, we need to make a discussion on the first one, the motion to appoint Matt Sealy.
Proper procedure, you would have to ask for a motion for this individual, right? I mean, I, I talked to him. I didn't like the fact that it had people's names on the agenda. He explained to me that we only had the same number to apply that we had positions for. So whoever makes the motion just needs to make the motion.
Make the motion to appoint that person.
That person. Make sure that we named that person.
I agree with you, Mr. Venable. I looked at that and I wondered why those names were on there, but he's got it summed it up here, so.
I'll make, I'll make the motion to appoint Matt Sealy.
Say.
I'll second. He was an employee for several years with, I think his knowledge of the system would be greatly appreciated.
25 years, please. All right, number two, or you have a motion to second all in favor of say aye and aye on the vote. Motion carried. Second, the motion to reappoint two members, Stephen Droust and Dan Pickett. Motion to second, all in favor of say aye and aye on the vote. Probably have one of you business reports for staff. Mr. Ken, you have anything today you'd like to share with us?
Nothing at all, sir. I'm joking. Yeah, I would like to provide an update. As you all know, with the rain, we've experienced a lot of damage. So probably the largest scale that we have assessed so far, and we really haven't assessed more than just looking at some of it, are the mountain slides that have been discussed tonight. So there are various mountain slides that are extensive in depth and magnitude. County Road 17 is an area that had previously had some slips before and essentially had not been repaired in the area that slid, to my knowledge. County Road 38, there's a very large slide there. County Road 93 is very long. The depth, the depth, I'm not sure about. It doesn't, doesn't appear to be all that deep. And so there's, there's a lot of work. As far as where we're at now, there's a lot of work out there that we haven't seen, under bridges, across streams, driveway entrances. And having experienced this in 2015, I think that we learned some things in assessing before we rush out to fix. We wanted to fix it and the guys dug in and they fixed it in 2015. And later on down the road, we found a lot of things that we all looked at each other and said, man, this looks really bad. I wonder if that happened in the Christmas flood. So, so our plan, our plan now, and of course, we'll do, we'll do as we're told, but our plan now is to make sure we have a valid assessment so that when we carry forward our estimates and we take our information to the state, that one, we have concrete information that we can accurately estimate by and will also help us down the road in prioritizing fixes, how to plan our attack on repairs and things like that. So to accomplish that, obviously to do a large assessment on 1,100 miles of roadway takes, takes substantial manpower and manpower that's trained to look and know what it's gonna take to repair or to know that something is damaged that needs repair. So in order to do that, we're gonna have to stop doing something else. So that's gonna be, right now, that's gonna be at least eight, two man teams that will drive the county and assess the county. We're gonna break the county up in eight or nine sections. Those folks will be equipped with a map and they'll be able to drive and assess the roadway, the drainage structures, bridges when they come through them, things of that nature. And we'll start building our databases in hopes for FEMA discussions and FEMA reimbursement. You know, we're at step one when the state declared a federal state of emergency. So, you know, if we, if we cross the threshold in dollars for repair estimates statewide, then we're hopeful that, you know, federal dollars have been involved. So we will have two patch crews that continue to patch and we will have one great all crew to respond to emergency things in nature as they drop up. But our main, our main initiative in force training will be dedicated to this assessment and it could take weeks. So that's our plan, that's our plan going forward. Now, some of the things that that assessment will encounter don't, don't alarm me to the extent that some of these slides do. Okay. Reason I say that is it's not necessarily just the complexity of fixing a slide, but it's the cost of fixing a slide and it's compounded four or five times. So the way FEMA works, if all that does come to fruition, we have to pay first, as you know, in doing the work, hiring someone to do the work and then being reimbursed. So we're in multimillion dollar repairs. The county don't have multimillion dollars to make those repairs and wait three years to get reimbursed. So that's, that's kinda where, you know, kinda where we are.
How long did it take to get reimbursed in 2015 repairs? I know it was near as extensive of repairs as we're looking at this round, was it 36 months, 24 months?
We were under, you know, we were probably under a million. I know we're under a million total. I don't remember the exact total because, you know, it came in increments how it was submitted on the project worksheets. But we just, it was just finalized, that was your summary. Just recently finalized.
And we're looking at well over a million dollars on some of the individual projects.
Yes, it wouldn't surprise me if we're in a two to three million range.
On the slides, will you do any core drilling to see how far are you gonna have to go down or how do you evaluate that?
It depends. They are geop hazard mitigation expert contractors out there. So with a slide like that, you know, the, the beautiful thing that, that we live and enjoy are these mountain sides. But the calumny material that washes off just also happens to be where we run our bulldozer and build our road. So in the strata in those mountains, that calumny material sitting on it, all it takes is water to trigger that, to trigger that slide at that layer and release that cohesion. So there are multiple ways of tapping through that layer and fixing the slides where they exist. But it really depends on whether we attack it or whether contract forces attack it. And ultimately, really, the price tag and complexity. So they're all, they're all individual kind of delicate, delicate creatures on figuring out a plan of attack and, and, you know, what we can handle and what would require something, something, something like expert equipment.
In the very near future, we're gonna have to sit down at a work session or something and just discuss finance. You know, we'll have to wait till we get through a assessment, a partial assessment in. But I think the county's sitting on less than $2 million capital. And, you know, I don't know exactly what, Mr. Manning, the administrator's not here at night, but it's gonna be difficult for us to put out the kind of dollars that it's gonna take to fix everything that needs to be fixed in the next 200 years.
Are there any roads that's just like a one-way in, there's no way out?
There are. There's a sizable slide, 300 feet long, probably 30 feet deep on Sutter House Mountain, County Road 189. There are two mountains and they're only one way in and out. That's one of them. So we're able to maintain one lane right now. That, that slide was already active prior to this event. Of course, this.
It's gotten worse.
It's completely exacerbated that, what's going on there. But yes, there is a, a crew that we're working today can maintain a lane of traffic and, and protection for that, that area.
Thank you.
I just wanna respond briefly to Mr. Morgan's comments about the agenda last week and point out that he, Mr. Morgan has studied the Open Meetings Act probably more than anybody else I know. But the Open Meetings Act does not require an agenda being posted. It does require that if one is posted, that if you posted the same matter, that a notice is given, but the Open Meetings Act also says that the governmental body may discuss additional matters, not limited to the agenda. Hidal 11, which covers, covers county commissions and their operations, does, requires notice of the meeting, but does not require an agenda of any kind. So the law does not require that. However, the procedures that you adopted does require an agenda to be presented, which you did. But it also provides, the procedures provide that a departure from the order of business can be approved by all the Commissioners present and voting. And that's what occurred. All the Commissioners approved the setting the rules aside and taking up that matter that was not initially on the agenda. So I just want to make sure you understand and you feel comfortable with what you did. It's not a violation of the law and it's not a violation of your established procedures.
Thank you. All right. Comments from the nation?
Hey, Tim, I got, I got something for you. I was just gonna let y'all know that I talked to the Department of Revenue and because of the governor, state of emergency, the State Revenue Commissioner, anyway, they're gonna extend, Friday, Thursday is the last day of the month, you know, to get your tags. And then there's penalties due after that. So, so they're gonna extend that. They're gonna allow our citizens to give, probably next week sometime. They'll let me know for sure in a couple of days when the deadline will be. But we're gonna try our best to get that word out there. So if there's anybody that hasn't renewed their car tags yet, or maybe they bought new vehicles and haven't come in to register them, you know, they're getting close to their 20 days, we're not gonna charge them no penalty until, we're gonna extend that or the state's gonna extend that for some time. If y'all could tell people that, we'll try to put that on our Facebook page and our website. If she'll check with me tomorrow, I should know. Cause sometimes depends on, depending on how bad it is, you know, sometimes it'll do a week, two weeks. I figured it'll probably sometime next week. But, you know, that'll give people a little bit more time to come in and get their, get their tags and stuff like that.
Nah, just, you know, I like, I like our employees, the public works, Sheriff's Department, you know, the work that they've done over the last few days and the work they have in the coming weeks and months. Appreciate their diligence and their hard work.
Mr. Seuss.
Oh, yes, sir. I got one comment. A citizen from Bryant had contacted me and he said the park, I reckon where we're overseeing, where Carl's, that a crew was supposed to oversee it, he said, we're in desperate need of some cleaning up inside the building where the bathrooms and showers were.
Higdon.
Higdon, uh huh. And he wanted to know what, I'd address that. And I said, we will. And well understood. I told him I didn't really know. He said there was, we had some people that lived on the campus.
In the old Sun Mountain.
The old Sun Mountain. And he said, I'm thinking they're supposed to be kinda looking after it, but it's not been done. And he said, I've been over there three different times. And he said, it is in bad need of some cleanup. Only other comment I had is what Mr. Venable said. I appreciate Jonathan, the job he's doing. I mean, the knowledge that he has to go forward. And I think he's addressing this in the right way because all this is unseen matters, you know. We don't have no idea really what it's gonna cost. And I've always said, that's something we gotta prepare ourselves for with no money in county. Because mother nature, you know, we have these tornadoes, these rains, torrential rains like we've had. And, and it can cost major, major dollars. And appreciate your work, crew, and doing what they're doing without this bad weather. And, you know, as he said, the Sheriff's Department. And, you know, I told him a while ago, I know we have a lot of issues over Paintright Valley, but, you know, the phone calls I received, I told him, I said, hey, don't call the county right now. I said, if there's something needs to be just picked up and threw out the road, let me know. There's chunks and things because we got more things, it's more important. So they got all the work they can do.
Thank you.
Same to them. Thank you, Jonathan, for all the work you've been doing, but also the fallen deer tire departments and all the local rescue squads that have bucked pocket, you know, in the Sheriff's Department, trying to help with that situation. So just wanna thank them for going out and during the weather and everything and doing what they could. And also congratulations to the lady Vikings. And good luck with Eagles tomorrow.
Same thing as Jackson and Mr. Seuss and Mr. Venable said. I mean, it's Gilbert, I'm sorry.
Things changed this year.
But all the first responders done a great job. And also too, I want people to beware of driving around the closed off roads. If something happens, who's responsible? You know, if somebody drives around a closed road and has an accident, is their insurance gonna pay since the road's closed? I mean, if somebody gets hurt?
If we close it, the way I understand it, it takes the liability off of you.
If somebody has personal damage to their vehicle or get hurt, it's their fault. I've got several reports of people driving around the barricades. On 93 is one of them, so.
We had some that's moved barricades.
So that's, I appreciate everybody, the whole county wide on coming together and helping.
I mean, we put barricades up for a reason. It's for people's safety more than anything. So I always want everybody to adhere to. When we put them up, it's for a reason. It's for the safety of people. So appreciate if everybody would buy and buy them.
Let us know, you know, companies let us know if somebody, if they are moved. So we need to get a program to get them back.
I seen one other day in Stevenson. They had water over road, they're not either. Kid was out there in the middle of it. And they gave the budget to come up and push him out of the water and he stalled his car out, you know.
Mr. Chairman. We appreciate your time, Lawrence. Thank you so much. I talk in the nuts and bolts. I feel the recognition of employees and I'd like to do that if I may. Two employees worked extensively over the weekend. Mike Dunn and Michael Crane. Both of those guys were called out several times, over and over, multiple times to County Road 67. They placed barricades, they placed water over the road signs. They, they probably received little to no rest. There were others involved. Two supervisors, you know, one supervisor handled the phone calls from dispatch and organizes this work, follows up on them. Another supervisor was involved up on 17. Ricky Sartan was also out. He got a ride. So Michael Crane and Mike Dunn, they worked, I didn't tally up the hours. The overtime sheet was on my, overtime sheets are on my desk this morning. It was a stack this day. And I couldn't help but notice that those guys had selected comp time instead of overtime on what they received. So I just wanna mention their names because the work that they, that they were into this weekend was, as you all can imagine. The deputies Rocky, they set up several slides for hours course, kept traffic at bay until barricades can be placed. So please pass our things along for that. And the fire department saved us enormous amounts of money by cutting trees for us. So, you know, a lot of time. So, you know, a lot of times, they can just manage the debris, and a lot of the solving's already been done, so. volunteer fire departments are great, I said. Thank you.
It is true, we did upgrade employees. We mentioned the road department a lot, because they do deserve it, the Sheriff's Department. And a lot of times, like dispatch, I don't think we remember those that had to take the calls all the time, the ladies in our office that are constantly, during stuff like this, are, are working harder because of these issues. So, I think all of our county employees have done a great job through this, so I appreciate those.
And those that endured the weather just show up and do their job and keep the courthouse good.
Anything else? I'd like to leave a motion.
I'll make a motion in a jury.
In a second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, vote for jury.
Mr. Chairman, any idea when, how long you think it'll take to get a estimate on the road damage? Two weeks, a month?
Probably a couple of weeks to get a scope of burn.
Yeah. We get dollars in weeks to a month.
You're talking about dollars.
Yeah, with the storm damage and everything. Because there's got to be some sort of timeframe, maybe not. It's probably a long turnaround, but as mentioned, y'all mentioned, you must pay for this road damage first, and then be reimbursed for emergency, emergency funds. So, this puts the county, and as Mr. Venable mentioned, two million dollars in capital assets exists now, and probably the damage is going to exceed there. So, it's what I'm asking is, how far out are you seeing that it's going to take to do your estimate? And then, are you going to have a special meeting, maybe to plan?
That's what Mr. Venable said. It'll take us probably a couple of weeks, which is able to assess, you know, what we got. We may have to put some out for bed, but we'll put a dollar amount on it, and then we'll come back in a work session to discuss how we're going to move forward.
And some of this, it depends on rain that's coming in next week. It's going to create a more problem.
Any interim plan that you have that you're working on right now, prior to this? I know that's a tough question.
Safety of the traveling public will be a priority for us, so anything that's deemed hazardous or, you know, dangerous, obviously, we'll still do everything we can to maintain safety for the traveling public. That's, that's our number one priority. Things that can be barricaded and deemed impassable, they'll be barricaded until assessments can be made, and we can dictate, or it can be dictated to us how, how this event's going to unfold. There's still a lot of unknowns at this point.
How many roads have we got to deal with water still?
There's a list, I don't know the exact number.
That's going to be accessed after the water goes down to see if it's.
Right, yeah, and the email I forwarded to all of you, those.
There's like thirteen, maybe like thirteen or seventeen.
There's a lot of undisclosed areas now that we really don't know about.
The assessment is just beginning, so we really don't even know the damage.
And I heard a report today from some of the public that new trucks were going through these areas with the water, so they're calling face failure on top of base failure, etcetera.
Oh, yeah. They were, that shouldn't be happening.
Rocky, is this creating, thank you so much, Rock, is this creating any special problems for the Sheriff's Department?
Well, I mean, certainly manpower issues with, you know, having blocked roads and things such as that till we can get stuff out. With already skeleton crew working, it's, you know, when you take two guys away from the shift and there's only three working, that makes it pretty tough to answer calls. Yeah, anytime you have an emergency like this, you're getting calls constantly and having to go check on things for people, so.
What do you think the manpower cost in addition is going to be for you, for the Sheriff's Department?
Oh, that won't be any additional for us, it's just people are out there working. I mean, now, as far as things like the rescue that went on, you know, obviously.
They find those guys yet, the vehicle swept away? Has it been confirmed there was a vehicle actually swept away?
I mean, nobody can confirm themselves, two people who were in it.
Right.
Rescued. They say there was, so.
We've got to thank, because, Lord, we're very blessed, because if those tornadoes had come in like they were predicted, I mean, we can, we can deal with these floods, but they could have been major damage and lives lost with the trees that would come down easily.
For the last couple, three, four years, we have talked extensively about the county's financial situation. There's been a lot of what-if scenarios thrown out, and I'm afraid that we have hit a what-if scenario that is going to really, really hurt this county for, for a long time. And, you know, I would urge everybody to pray for this county and our financial situation, and do everything they can to help us.
In the past, there's commissions, when emergencies have occurred, of taking out loans to the bank, you think maybe that's a possibility this time, and taking out a loan and repaying?
It's possible, it's possible, you know, but you've got to be able to service that debt. And right now, we're paving about eight miles of the road a year, and if you take that away and to service debt, then, you know, that compounds for years to come, you know.
Takes a long time to dig back up.
We're already in prime times for this.
Saying you need a tax increase?
Well, I didn't say increase, but we do need a revenue increase.
Revenue increase?
It could be, it could be reduced.
Thanks a lot.